Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Minnehaha County Commission Meeting. Today's date's Tuesday, February 2nd. We will start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everybody would stand.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. Flamation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have meeting documents right next to Commissioner Heiburger in the binder, the white binder over there, if anybody would like to see them. And just remind everybody, silence your cell phone, please. If anybody needs a listening device, see one of the county staff, we have those available. And we will move on, call our meeting to order, and move on to routine business. Looking for a motion to approve our agenda. So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. And since we have everybody here, I can do a voice vote on this, correct? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And we will move on to our meeting minutes for January 26th.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Bills to be paid in the amount of $305,598.41. Pay the bills. But low by comparative standards. Any comments on the bills? Alrighty. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Alright. We have some reports available. The first one is the Safety Committee Annual Report for 2020, and Doug Blomker is here from Emergency Management, just to give us a little update.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just real briefly, you have in front of you a memo with the activities of the Safety Committee for last year. Due to COVID, we weren't quite as active as we have been in past years, but we did all of our required trainings as we needed to. Part of our other activities that the Safety Committee does is to go out and do inspections of all of our facilities to check for any safety violations. We did, again, those that we could, but there were a couple of months where we basically had to shut down due to COVID, but we tried to hit it a little harder at the end of the year, and we're starting off this year a little stronger due to the circumstances that we're in. Members of the Safety Committee, or myself, Brian Monker, John Trana, Scott Berg, Mike McGovern, Melinda Story, Hayden Graff, and Maggie Carey. Everybody participates really well and works very well together, and special kudos to Maggie for keeping us organized and keeping us on track with stuff, too. One of the other things we did is, this last year's, just through our activities that we were, we were able to get a credit of 9% towards, that was applied to the Minnehaha County workers' compensation premiums, and that totaled just over $48,000 that came back to the county just for activities that we, that the Safety Committee is involved with. So, having said that, if the Commissioners have any questions, we'd like to answer them.
Thank you, Doug. Good return back to the county for your activities. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
There's also a report from the Regional Juvenile Detention Center, but Jamie will be up later as part of a presentation. And then also, the LINK report is also on file. And very good read, if you want to see a historical perspective on the last year. The LINK Board met last week and approved the writing of those, of that report. Steve Lindquist did an outstanding job of putting everything together, so if anybody wants to ever know how we got to where we are and what we did the last year, I was surprised. So, that is also available. Personnel actions. Need a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is unanimous. Morning, Carrie.
Good morning. Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I have the following significant anniversaries for February 2021 for you. Lori Montes, who is the Assistant Director of Human Services, celebrating five years. Jessa Bjork, who's a correctional officer at the jail, celebrating five years. Deputy Taylor Court, who's in the sheriff's office, celebrating five years. Jared Toronas, also a deputy sheriff for the sheriff's office, celebrating 10. And Kristi Osterloo in IT, celebrating 20 years of service. And I thought maybe we would have Deputy Court or someone with us, but we'll have to just go ahead and extend our gratitude to them through the meeting.
Much appreciated for their years of service. Thank you.
The next item I have is to record the volunteers for January. Another impressive list with 146 individuals serving throughout six areas of the county. Very grateful to them as well.
And it's hard to volunteer from home, so they are showing up, so...
They are.
Yes, thank you.
Alright.
Definitely thank you to them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Alright, and we'll move on to abatements recommended for approval. We have one from the city of Sioux Falls for parcel number 10448, 2020 property taxes in the amount of $3,532.40. Good morning, Chris.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chris Lilly, Equalization. Yeah, this is pretty straightforward. The city purchased a piece of property. From the time they purchased that, it becomes exempt, and we can't do anything with those until the taxes come due to abate those. So I recommend approval on this one.
Alright, so we're going to take these one at a time. I need a motion. So move.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the abatement. Roll call vote, please.
Barr?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Hirsty?
Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to our second abatement from the Department of Game Fish and Parks, parcel number 59210, 2020 property taxes in the amount of $936.44.
Again, this one is the same scenario, game fish and parks. For the most part, is exempt. They do declare if they are not. So basically, with the game fish and parks, if they acquire a piece of land that they use solely for their purposes and is not open to the public, typically, they are taxed. So they disclose that to us. On this one here, this is open to the public once they acquired it, so they become exempt from the time of their ownership. So we recommend approval of this.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Hirsty?
Aye. Motion carries. And the last one, from Gary and Cindy Meyer, parcel number 82901, 2020 property taxes in the amount of $78.70. Please explain this one.
Yep, this one here is an owner-occupied issue. This is an office error where we received it and it got on an adjoining piece of property, and we, it's a little complex to code it. We, I just discovered that out actually this morning, that when we put the owner-occupied coding in there, there's another screen that it also has to go into, or at the end of the year, that screen wipes it out. So this one here, we do have an application. We made the application on the program, but it, once we processed the end of year, it removed it and it was discovered, so we are recommending. This is our error, and I would be always straightforward with the Commission on, if we make an error, we want to correct it. Most things with owner-occupied abatement requests are generally, they didn't own the property on the date or other specific reasons that aren't covered under the law. But this one is our error, and we recommend approval of this one.
Move for approval.
Second.
And a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Chris. And notices and requests, there are none. Planning and zoning notices, there are none, and there are no petitions for compromise of lean. We are now at public comment. I understand we may have a call in. Has that happened?
Yes. This is Stephen Ciano.
Good morning, Stephen. I'll give you a few minutes to talk to us.
Okay, thank you. I'll give you a little bit of background. I'm a disabled veteran since 78 from PTSD, from personal assault in the military, and this has been found to be compounding Asperger's. That's why I'm different and sometimes get picked on. And I have been afflicted with secondary physical disability, which has been wrongfully denied for many years, my initial disability, and I'm finally getting to the point with the VA to have that respected more. But as I see it, I feel that I've been further assaulted by medical and mental health professionals in the cover-up of this for years, and people in the medical and mental health establishment, I guess don't want to step on toes of someone who's claimed a condition to not exist priorly. That's how it goes. About 20 years ago, I came to this area with my diagnosis of, which was confirmed, and I've had a lot of resistance in getting it accepted since. Now, now I'm in a situation where I ride a bus generally, like most days, and since this mask mandate and the virus scare, which, hey, I've had it, I know it's bad, but I know, but I feel that this still is a hoax, the virus scare, in order to promote the vaccine, which a lot of tax money has gone to. And I speak openly about my beliefs on the bus, and I think I'm being attacked for this reason, and at City Council. I've, I've told my suspicion that when the number nine to my place was suspended for a while, that it was pointed at me. I take it personally, I told them, as I recall. And they, they have heard a lot of information from a lot of people against the mask mandate. So they are defying the public, and I told you people that I felt that they should be held criminally cannibal. Well, I've had multiple bus drivers even since, and, you know, since I got a doctor note and assurance of supervisors and support of supervisors to, that I, to exempt me from the mask mandate. And a couple of weeks back, I was with this on-demand, I was out in the cold, on crutches, and I had to sit on the ground, and police came and questioned me for over an hour. I felt that this was also a personal attack. I, then, on Wednesday, about 6: something, I guess, I was coming back from my Dallas place on the west side, who I go to regularly, she's homebound, and I help her out, and I'm coming back, I'm tired at the end of the day, at the crutches, because my walker don't work well on this terrain, these conditions. So I was confronted first by the dispatcher and then by the driver, that I was not allowed to drive without covering my face. And I was given a second-hand face shield. And I, I was threatened with having to walk four miles despite my spinal injuries to get back, or you were, cause a lot of anxiety because of my condition, be greatly inconvenienced, and threatened by this.
Steve, Steve, I'm going to give you about 15 seconds.
This I feel is supported.
Steve, I'm going to give you about 15 seconds to make your final comments here. Okay, please?
Yeah, I do feel that action should be taken to expose what is going on, to perhaps hold people accountable, including the bus people, and the City Council, and Mayor, who are apparently promoting this, because I feel they are responsible somewhat, and I can't get to their meeting. I may not, I may miss it tonight. So I thank you.
I thank you, Steve. You have a good day, sir.
I'll try. Bye.
Did I hang up on everybody? Oh, well, I'm sorry. Okay. Craig Dewey, I think you had some comments for, some public comments?
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office, here to make one final pitch for auctioning off the county's unmined gravel pit that is approximately between 37 and 38 acres. That will be auctioned off at 11:00 a.m. next week on Monday, February 8th, in the courtroom of the Old Courthouse Museum. Weeman Auction is conducting the auction. We have put a number of different marketing materials up online on the county website that include a broker's opinion of value from a commercial real estate broker, geotechnical tests, so you can find out a little bit more about the gravel and mineral composition that exists there. And then we also put the plat, as well as overhead views where the borings are conducted. And just due to some questions that we had about one of the borings in particular, we wanted to be forthright in providing any additional information we could, so we had two additional borings that were conducted last week. And so that report just came in yesterday, that is being emailed out to interested parties, which the county has been contacting different local contractors, so you can find out that information there. The Commission did set a $950,000 reserve price for the auction, and then a 10% non-refundable down payment is due by the end of the day of the auction. And lastly, potential bidders, if you're interested, need to bring a letter of pre-qualification or verification of funds in your bank account, whether you're paying cash or financing, to be able to register to bid. So we certainly would invite anyone who would be interested. There's a lot of high-quality gravel specifically in that area, and it's really close in proximity to Sioux Falls as well. So it'd be an opportunity for any contractor particularly, as we have a number of large construction projects that you're going to hear about here later in this meeting that are going on in the Sioux Falls area.
Thank you very much, Craig.
Thank you.
I'm sure you've learned more about gravel than you ever thought you would, so appreciate it.
That's very true.
Alrighty. Anybody else here for public comment? Doesn't appear to be that way. We will move on to our regular business, which we will begin with the City of Sioux Falls Brief on Tax Increment Financing, number 23, for the Foundation Park North. I think we have Jeff Eckoff, not on the list, but welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm infiltrating your meeting. Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Eckoff, Director of Planning and Development Services for the city of Sioux Falls. Happy Groundhog Day, for what that's worth these days. Maybe they'll, maybe they'll see something and go away, and the COVID will go away, hopefully, so. Anyway, no, today I'm here to talk to you about TIF 23, and certainly, this body has seen TIFs and heard briefings on these before, but this one is unique, and it's unique in a few different ways. First of all, in the size and the scope of the TIF. Typically, we do them very specific to a project. This one is over entire development. As you may remember, back in September, we created the district. It's 540 acres. That is basically Foundation Park, and Bob Munt is here, and he'll show you the visuals in just a couple of minutes. That 540 acres includes 80 acres on the Amazon site. So there's 460 undeveloped acres that this TIF would go towards developing the entire park to be built ready for prospects that are coming along. The size and the competitiveness of these large projects, if you remember, that was the vision cast when they did Foundation Park, is to exactly accommodate these large projects that take chunks of land that are 40, 80, 100-plus acres at a time. Big projects create big challenges, cost of development, those types of things. And so you'll see the scope of that, both in the size and the cost of this, of the size of the TIF, when Bob gives his presentation. The other thing that's a little bit unique is usually, we do these as a development TIF with the developer, might be Lloyd Company, might be Jeff Scherzlich, it might be whomever. This is with our development, our nonprofit development partner, the Development Foundation. They are the developer on this, they are the ones that will be, will have the agreements with, to go out and actually put in the infrastructure, develop this, and get the land ready to be competitive for these large types of projects. As you know, the Development Foundation has a long history of successful land development and selling and create, the creation of jobs, and Bob will talk about those numbers, but they've been around for almost 60 years doing this. They were put together long ago to attract Eros, the Eros Data Center, if you remember back in those days, was the initial mission of the Development Foundation, and they've been doing that job ever since. The last thing I would say to you is it's unique in the opportunity because of the size and the scale of the project we're trying to create out there. You know, Sioux Falls is no longer competing with Aberdeen and Fargo and Mitchell for projects. We're competing with Kansas City and Omaha and Des Moines and places like that, and that raises the profile, it raises the challenge, it raises the level of competitiveness, but it also brings in these larger projects that Bob will be talking to you about soon. So with that, I'm going to let Bob go through his presentation. I'll be here for questions as well. Dustin Powers, of course, is here as well to answer the hard questions, and we'll turn that over to Bob. But Bob is the current president, CEO of the Sioux Falls Development Foundation, and he is, his staff have really rejuvenated that organization, and we've really enjoyed working with them, and great vision and great partnership within that group. So I'll, at this time, I'll turn it over to Bob. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Good morning, Mr. Munt.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I've allowed to take my mask off here if I'm at the camera.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, please.
Well, thank you for having me. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to come forward and talk a little bit about some of the plans that we have. Jeff did a nice job of kind of framing everything up. I have with me also Michael Gray. Mike's been kind of the lead person on this whole thing, helping us put the numbers together and stuff on this, and we've been working on this for quite some time. So again, appreciate the opportunity. It has also really been a pleasure working with Jeff and his team and making this whole project feasible and making it work. So I want to go through with you today, kind of some of the basics of the Tax Increment Financing 23, and kind of take a look at what, what it means, what the numbers mean, and really take a look at how this could affect us in the long term. So with this, again, TIF number 23, Foundation Park North is how we refer to this, so if I can go to the next slide, please. I think this is my control over here, right? Okay, thank you. So as Jeff was mentioning, we are not new to development. We've been doing this since 1974. We were established in, I think, late 1950s, actually, and we started with Eros Data Center and kind of moved forward from there, but this is our ninth development park right now in Foundation Park. We're still, we still have property available in Park Number Eight, which is kind of in the northeast corner of Sioux Falls, but we're a bit limited up there with the smaller lots and things like that. So Foundation Park was created back in 2015, 2016 to really look at the concept of mega-site development, large tracts of ground for large employers, the likes of which are Amazon and CJ Foods and those types of folks. So we've been pretty successful in helping to attract some of those companies here. But these are our parks, responsible about 1,300 acres, I think, Mike, is that correct? 13,000 jobs, about 130 businesses located in these parks over the past 50 years. So again, pretty good track record, and we want to continue that record here for the area as well. So, next slide, please. So remember, back in September, we created the TIF boundaries, if you will, so the boundaries are those businesses and industries inside that particular TIF boundary. It's in Foundation Park. It is 540 acres of developable property. 80 acres of that is the Amazon site that you see along Marion Road, so we have that inside the district, and that will create the first increment that we have in the particular district. And again, this is all so that we can look at developing Foundation Park North, which right now is really just farm fields and gravel roads, right? So we want to make sure that we can develop that in the future. Next slide, please. So again, just a history of Foundation Park. You're skipping on me there. Alright. Well, we can go to this part. So number of acres, 540 acres, as I mentioned. So businesses that are projected, we're projecting, and we're from five to eight businesses in this particular area. It depends upon the size of the business. Some businesses need 50, some need 100, some need 200, and so we're making that flexible. Direct jobs, 4,000 to 6,000 jobs at an annual payroll, 200 to $300,000, $300 million, sorry. Capex, which is the cost of all the development, including the private development costs that these companies would have, somewhere in the area of $2.5 billion. Tax-based projected, 1.2 billion, and that generates about $24 million annually in property tax when this is all built out. It does not include construction jobs, in our calculations anyway, but it does include a lot of construction jobs during the time that these companies are developing, and then the support jobs that go along with that, as far as the services and things like that, that are provided to those companies that are out there. Next slide, please. So just a quick little video of Foundation Park, and I'll kind of narrate this as we kind of walk through that. Again, we did some drone footage. This is the site for, for Amazon. You can see the size and scope of this. Those are big cranes in the background there that look pretty small. You can see Nordica warehouses off in the distance there. This is the south entrance, basically, of Foundation Court that is going in right now. It is roughed in, and it will be paved here this spring and early summer, so that will be complete, will complete Foundation Court. You can see the cornfield off to the right there. That's actually the buffer between us and McCrossin. As we move down to the east on the, this road, we'll come to our 56-acre piece kind of inside the horseshoe, as we call it, that has been graded this last summer. You may have seen a lot of graders out there, again, grading that area out there. We actually have some very strong interest in this 56-acre piece as well, out there right now, so we're working with that company right now and hope in the next 60 to 90 days to be able to land that out there as well. You can see the Nordica warehouse there in the distance, again, kind of the, again, size and scope of this particular site. One of the other exciting pieces that we've learned recently is that these guys are expanding. That site pad that you see to the right there is another 130 acres that they're going to be adding on to wind chill. That'll put their facility at roughly 550,000 square feet. And then this is kind of the drone footage of what it looks like north of the tracks, and this is what we're talking about developing here. It's basically a cornfield now, ungraded, lots of, you know, stuff that needs to be done out there. No roads going into it right now that are, that are usable at this point. We have eliminated all of the farm, farmsteads and stuff that were on there when I first got here, so it's basically bare ground at this particular point in time, but there are no utilities, infrastructure, anything else like that to this site, and that's what we're going to be using this TIF for. So, next slide, please. So just to kind of give you, again, a scale here, this is Foundation Park, 820 acres, that's the whole park itself, but this is downtown Sioux Falls, kind of superimposed over the top of that. So you can get the, kind of the idea, 450 acres of downtown, and that park's 820, so very, very large tract of ground that we're talking about here, and it kind of refers back to what Jeff said, it's something like, we've never done this before. And so this is kind of new for us, but we think it's the stuff that needs to be done. So the TIF project plan, current property taxes that are generated off of that particular property, $70,000 per year, roughly. We are asking for a $94.4 million TIF, basically, to be able to collect those dollars and be able to provide shovel-ready industrial ground and create what we're calling an Economic Development Competitiveness Fund. And I want to walk through that with you in this next slide here. So the project plan overview, shovel-ready industrial land, what do we mean by that? We mean, and you can click, roads, water, sewer, grading, regional detention ponds, additional rail sightings, and really, anything inside that particular park that we need to put in in order to accommodate potential customers in that. So again, the TIF improvements cover about 460 acres, and again, that excludes the 80-acre Amazon site. Next slide, please. So breaking down the project costs, when we talk about infrastructure improvements, we estimate roughly $50.4 million will be spent on the infrastructure itself, and that includes 26,000 lineal feet of industrial-grade roads and water and sewers, 500,000 square cubic yards of earth and environmental work, plating and sanitary cost recovery, that's another $52 million when you look at engineering, plating fees, sewer cost recovery fees, et cetera. And then our Economic Development Competitiveness Fund at $30 million. That's going to be used to establish really kind of a fund that we can go to use, kind of a flexible fund that we can use if, in fact, we have to do some additional work out there, or if we have to work with a company regarding incentives and those types of things that it's going to take to land that company. So total eligible project costs, and the state requires us to basically identify eligible costs of 132 million. Many TIFs spend right up to that eligible cost level. We're not doing that. We are putting in some of the money ourselves and making sure that we can make this thing work. So of that 132 million, we're asking for that $94.4 million. Next slide, please. So the Competitiveness Fund, again, really looking at what do we need to do to protect ourselves, if you will, in the future against unknown costs that we might have out there to maybe be able to, again, negotiate with companies as far as things like reduced land costs and those types of things, potential uses, as I've got identified there. And then who would oversee that? Really, the city of Sioux Falls, representatives from the city of Sioux Falls, representatives from the foundation would really oversee that fund and be able to kind of implement those particular dollars in and be able to kind of implement those particular dollars in the projects that we saw fit to make sure that, again, we're maximizing the use of this TIF, but we're also maximizing the efficiency that we have within that TIF. So with that, I think we go to the next slide. I think this is kind of a summary. Again, the $2.5 billion is what we anticipate is going to be the total expenditures in that particular area. That includes the private investment from the companies that are locating there. TIP eligible costs, that's that 132 million that we talked about. The total investment, $2.6 billion. And again, we're requesting 94.3. So looking at the numbers, they look like big numbers, but when you look at the acreages that we are talking about, those are large numbers of acres as well. So if we go to the next slide. So our steps are, the informational presentation was made last week to city council. We're here today visiting with you guys. We have meetings with Tri Valley School Board here coming up, as well as the planning commission on tomorrow, actually. Our first reading goes to city council on the 16th of February, and on March 2nd would be the second reading for city council. So what we're asking for from the city council really is to approve the boundary, which they did back in their September meeting, and then to approve the project plan and the development agreements that would go along with that. So the project plan basically outlines all of the costs and expenditures and things that we would have going forward over the next five years that we'll have to do. So with that, I'll ask for any questions. I'm sure you probably have some. I'm happy to answer those. And if I can't, Mike's here. Jeff, I think, is still out in the hallway if we need him. So open to any questions that you guys might have at this time.
Questions from the commission?
Chairman.
Jeff.
I really appreciate the presentation, and I think it's an exciting conflict, project. Let me ask, the oversight, what would be, there's a lot of money sloshing around in this kind of a deal. Can we be confident that it'll be spent correctly?
Yeah, so the oversight of this is, as I mentioned, we're the ones that are kind of taking the risk on this. So we'll be the oversight of the day-to-day operations, but we have to give reports out to city council, basically on a quarterly basis, that says, this is how we're spending your money, this is how it's being implemented, et cetera. So we'll have a, basically, an obligation to them to report how we're spending this money. And it has to be spent according to the project plan and the development agreement. Those are very clearly spelled out in there, that we are responsible for those dollars, that we are accountable for those dollars to the city council.
Mr. Benega.
Bob, in the number of TIFs that the community of Sioux Falls has done and the county has done, almost all of those have been paid off or, I guess, concluded in the success of those projects. Do you keep a track record of how many of those were done early and if, in fact, they met the goals that were originally put out as financial milestones?
Jeff or Dustin can probably answer that a lot better than I can. My immediate response is absolutely, they've been really done well. No, I'm just kidding. Talk to Dustin.
Mr. Powers, good morning. Morning, County Commission. Dustin Powers with the Sioux Falls Planning and Development Services Department. Your question was regarding some of our existing TIFs or previous TIFs and how well they've been successful. We do track those. I guess it's, unless we call out one specifically, it's hard to say whether or not each one individually. We do have, we have had a few where we've created the district, but then dissolved the district before a project actually occurred. So we have a few of those, but on, when we look at all of the ones that we've done, typically, most of them have paid off early. We do have a few that'll probably go out to their full 20 years, but that's because they really maximized all of the increment that they were generating for the uses that there'll be, the TIF is helping assist with. So again, really, that value they generate kind of depends on how long those go out. But historically, we've had pretty good success with meeting all of the goals. And one of the things that we do when we write the project plan, obviously, that outlines all those eligible expenses, but kind of what we're trying to achieve with that project. And then we really iterate that in the development agreement, because we, on a majority of our TIFs, it's a developer-funded TIF. So they're taking the liability, essentially. If they don't generate the revenue or the increment that we wrote in the plan, then they'll, they won't have, you know, possibly the money to pay them off. So they're taking that risk, and so they also want it to succeed. And so that's ultimately helped us with making sure all of these projects meet those goals and ultimately do succeed, because they're the ones taking the risk. And in this case, again, it is the development foundation stepping up for this TIF and Foundation Park North to take that risk on, so.
Off the top of your head, do you have any idea how many are still open that were started?
Yeah, so we have 20, this is the 23rd district to the city of Sioux Falls. I want to say we have 12 open. And I believe we have one that's going to be, another one that's going to be coming off the record here this spring. So I believe TIF 7 is another downtown one that'll actually be coming off. Last year, TIF 5 was one that came off. So as they start to pay off, TIF 5 paid off, I believe, in about 12, 13 years. This one that will be taking off here this spring is around that 15-year mark. So again, state law allows us up to 20, and historically, we've seen them fall off before that.
Can you just briefly tell the audience that frankly, there's a misperception of what happens with the tax base and the investment is kind of discussed, that we lose some taxes, which isn't true. We're maintaining the amount that we currently get, and the rest of the taxes are going into the projects. Can you just briefly talk about that, just to explain it better than I would be able to?
Yeah, absolutely. As Bob presented earlier, the TIF District 23 that we're talking about for Foundation Park North generates about $70,000 of property taxes for the entire district. So when we established the district back last fall, we locked in that base value. So the base value is about 3.5 million, which generates that $70,000 in taxes. Those taxes will continue to be collected and distributed to the taxing entities as it normally would, even without the TIF district. What changes is, is now that we've created the district, now there's this increment that can be created with the new projects. So those new projects create the increment, that's then funneled back to pay those project costs. Once the district dissolves, then will be all of those new taxes, the base plus the increment will then be paid to all of the taxing entities. And again, some of the misperception is, is that, well, this would happen anyway. And what we, what we know is a lot of the projects that we do TIF for, they won't happen if we don't do TIF, or they won't happen to at least the scale. And so we won't generate as much property taxes as we're talking about. So, so again, we evaluate these, you know, pretty thoroughly here at the city of Sioux Falls. We do a lot less than some of our other communities here in South Dakota and across the nation. And so we're pretty confident that when we evaluate these, you know, we're evaluating them on the best-case scenario for not just the city or the developer, but all the taxing entities, you know, and that we support as part of this, so.
Thank you.
Dustin, I know the answer, but I just would like you to maybe say it. Is Amazon paying property taxes?
Yes.
At the full value of their property?
Yes.
Okay. So they're not, they're not paying, they're not, a TIF does not allow them to not pay property taxes. They are paying the full amount of property taxes on their property.
Yeah, so every property that goes into the district actually will pay their property taxes. Now, what I would say with Amazon is that we needed that project to occur. Otherwise, this TIF was impossible, because ultimately, we would have no increment to pay for all of these costs we're talking about. So ultimately, they'll pay their taxes. That'll come funnel through the TIF to support the costs that Bob presented for the Sioux Falls Development Foundation. And that's really what's generating the ability to build out the whole north part of the park is because they are paying their taxes.
Did Amazon request this TIF?
No.
Good, thank you. I have a couple of questions. If the commission will allow me that. The economic development competitive competitiveness fund, you mentioned that the city and the development foundation are going to be the oversight of it. I'm just curious, kind of maybe getting too deep into the weeds, but, you know, if you get a real strong mayor or a real strong development foundation, I mean, is there a good balance of power there so that it's shared equally on that $30 million that's going to be sitting there, that one or the other doesn't fully control it?
Yeah, I think right now, we're looking at a two and two, or maybe a three and three. We don't have too many people on there, but we want to make sure that there's representation from the city and representation from the foundation. We'll take a look at all the variables that are on there and make those decisions based on that. And even with that, we're still accountable back to the full city council to make sure that they are approving those and they are in support of those. So again, we're trying to balance that out so that we've got strong people on both sides that look to the greater good of the area as opposed to just what's best for them.
Okay. And one more question, Bob. You know, your presentation talked about big numbers, but, you know, break it down for me. An acre of land, you pay X, and you sell it for more than X.
Correct.
What the TIF is, what is, what's the TIF money going to? What's going into that acre of land that increases the value of it?
Well, all the infrastructure that's there. So all the streets, all the sewers, all the water, all the utilities, the grading of the site, the detention ponds, wetlands mitigation, power line relocations. I mean, all those things are possible things that could be in those numbers to be able to, again, develop the site in a timely fashion. When you, when we buy property and then sell it, we usually price it to pay for most of those particular things on a much smaller scale than what we're talking about here. And really, it's the scale that is precipitating us having to do the TIF, because we just can't generate enough land sales to be able to pay for all this at the same time. The other point of that is, you know, with these big companies, we're competing with other states and with other countries, quite frankly. And so they're going to come to the table with a package that says, well, you know, Texas is giving us free land or, you know, highly reduced land. So we need to be able to compete with that. So the competitiveness fund will be used in some way or shape or form to also help us kind of address those issues. So a lot of, it's a complicated answer to your question, I guess. And so we're trying to be as flexible as we can, being able to put the infrastructure in, utilizing the TIF, but also then having the competitiveness fund to be able to be flexible on that, maybe provide some additional upgrades, I guess, to their property if we can in order to land them here.
So when you take an acre of land and you've got plating fees and sewer and water and curb and gutter and streets and whatever else might be there, cost per acre roughly?
So we price our ground right now up there, I think we have it priced at 275 per square foot. So whatever that pans out to as a per acre.
43,000 square feet per acre, do the math?
Yeah, so 120,000 roughly, 110,000, I guess, if my math is even close, per acre. So when we sell it, if we sell it at that price, again, all those costs that you mentioned before are typically taken out of there. But when we, again, we're looking at 460 acres, that math doesn't work.
Okay.
We'd have to sell all the ground to be able to do that, and we haven't, we can't do that, so.
Big scale?
It is.
Any other questions?
I think I know the answer to this one also, but I'll ask. With the establishment of the First Premier Scholarship Fund and all the funding that's being developed, literally for students to go to school, it may not have been able to do that in the past. Are you working with the companies that frankly are interested in this part of the country to be able to develop enough workforce between the two to make that work even better?
Yeah, I wasn't expecting that question today, but thank you. Anyway, we are. And we understand that we have a workforce issue, just like many other communities across the country do. I think we're fortunate in the fact that we have those types of scholarships available. They can work with our colleges, universities. We've got a little bit of time between us and the CJ Schwann's deal. Amazon's coming up very, very quickly, so we're going to have to really start pushing on that. We are already. But we are working with our educational institutions. We're also working with our alumni associations to bring back people that may have graduated from some of those colleges, universities, tech schools, to make sure that they know that there's jobs available here. We're, right now, researching some opportunities to target certain areas that have the type of tech skills that we need to maybe do some social media advertising, possibly some billboard radio types of things just to try to bring people here to Sioux Falls. So painfully aware of the labor situation, and, you know, we gained, what, 5,000 residents, I think, last year. I see that trend continuing. We're also, since you kind of asked, we're also working on housing, you know, making sure that the people that we do bring in for these jobs have available housing right now that's in very short supply. So Mayor Tenhaken and others are working very hard on that. I think the governor recognizes that need as well. So there's some bills out in the legislature right now talking about housing and workforce and things like that. So it's a, it's an issue with us, it's an issue with the state, it's an issue in Rapid City. So we're all trying to solve that problem. And if anybody has any, you know, magical formulas for how to do that, I'm all ears. So we're trying things to see what happens, and we hope that we can continue to bring people into this area. Another big thing that, you know, again, the city talks about a lot, which is absolutely true, is quality of life. You know, what type of quality of life do we have here? What type of government do we have here? You know, is it a, is it a good government? Are they efficient? Are they effective? And I think we can answer yes to all those. So we have got a very good leg up on some of our competition on that. But we just need to get the word out about Sioux Falls, and that's what we're going to try to do here this next year. Long answer to a short question, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your time. Thanks for your service. Appreciate all your support that you give us, and we'll continue to work with you guys to make sure we keep you up to speed on what we're doing out there. And if you ever have any questions about the park, about what we're doing out there, please let me know. And, you know, if you ever want to tour the park, I'll do that as well. So let me know, and we can do that as well. So thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
All righty. Our next presentation is from the Minnehaw County JDC. Jamie, grab it. Jamie Hilton always somewhere?
He's on.
Oh, he's on the phone, that's right, I forgot. Welcome, Jamie.
Thank you, commissioners. I apologize, I can't be there in person today. I've had close contact with someone, so I'm hunkering down in my office and making sure I do everything not to spread it on to anyone else. I'm going to talk to you today about JDC, some of our accomplishments, some of our concerns that we have, and then also some projects that we're currently involved in. Starting off with accomplishments, you know, everybody's had to deal with COVID. We had constant changes from the get-go. We worked with many different agencies, most closely with our HR department in the county, with Mark and his group. We made many changes out here to our policy, made changes to how we did visitation, cleaning procedures. We installed, Mark installed halos in our HVAC. We were able to acquire electrostatic sprayers. We purchased temperature stations for both our main entrance and our employee entrance. We purchased ultraviolet lights to put in the classroom every night, went through all of those types of things. We worked closely with the American Corrections Association, CDC, staying on top of all of those types of things. We kind of were the leaders in closing down face-to-face visitation. We've been able to bring that back, which we're proud of. But we took every precaution we could, and we saw some success because of that. Throughout this whole time, we've only had four youth that have been positive for COVID-19, and all four of those youth came in already positive. We've been able to make sure that we didn't have any spread throughout our facility. Our staff, you know, weren't as lucky. We had staff that were hit. We were hardest hit during the months of November and December, you know, but we've been able to pull through. Also, you know, the next point talks about increased long-distance face-to-face visitation. It really should focus on the utilization of technology. We were planning on the face-to-face visits. We've been working on trying to get that accomplished for a little while, because we have people that sometimes have to travel two and a half hours each way to come for a one-hour visit with their family. So it pushed up our timeline, but we can say that we were very successful with that. The hardest part was making sure people had the technology to be able to utilize it and instructing them how to use Zoom, which sometimes can be a little bit of a challenge in itself. But we were successful in being able to schedule those visits. Along with the use of technology, we were able to continue our QMHP process, where our counselors were able to meet face-to-face over an iPad with people that were in quarantine. You know, we have also been able to do some counseling sessions outside of our QMHP sessions, some SABISA classes, which are classes, which are chemical dependency classes for kids. We were able to also get chemical dependent, chemical dependency treatment needs assessments completed. So we're pretty proud of that. We had our late-year hire of our training and compliance officer. That's been going very well. He's been able to jump right in, working on new higher training, developing training processes for the coming year. We have a lot of things coming forward with him that we're going to continue, but we've seen, already seen very good progress and, and improvement in our training. Our staff seem a lot more ready to hit the floor running when they're ready at the end of their initial training sessions. We're seeing improved training for existing staff as well. So we're very proud of him and, and what he's been able to accomplish in a short amount of time. The JDC facility assessment, that was a process that should have been done and, and reported back to you by August, but then COVID hit. We were able to work with all the people that were completing the assessment, get them in, and be able to interview the staff and youth that they needed to for that process. And we're expecting a final report now, hopefully by mid-February, March 1st at the latest, so that we can present that to you. We completed training for two of our staff to be able to be facilitators for what's called MRT. It's a, it's a somewhat of a corrective thinking-type program that we're currently doing through our QMHP here in the facility. We'll be able to do it on our own and, and train more of our staff and be able to save a little money by doing it on our own. We continue to serve as a model site for JDAI. We continually get phone calls for information and, and guidance with some of the new areas that are entering into the JDAI world. Our placement coordinator, Lisa Barons, and myself work very hard to give them any assistance we can throughout their process. It's not an easy process. We're still learning and we're still advancing as we go. And if we can give any guidance to help them along the way, that we, we feel very good about doing that. And then, of course, our, our ultimate goal is making sure that we hold the right kid at the right place at the right time. You know, even with Corona, we were able to accomplish holding the kids that we needed to hold, getting them through the court process, and then, you know, making sure that they were moving on to where they need to move on. There were some delays in that process, but we were able to keep people moving and keep everything going. Some of our challenges and concerns, again, staff wellness and turnover. You know, Nate and I have been in a nationwide training for superintendents and directors of juvenile facilities. And, and the process that we focused on the most was staff wellness. We find that we're not unique in the problems that we have. We're actually doing pretty good compared to some of the places throughout the nation. We've been able to get through this process with COVID. We've had to stretch some of our staff then. We've had to work them a little extra. But compared to places nationwide that are having mandatory sixteen-hour shifts, mandatory overtime, you know, we haven't had to do that, and we've been very lucky. It's been a tough year. We have worked them some extra hours. They've had to adjust their schedules. It's been trying for them, you know, and, but they've pulled through, and they're very professional. And I can't be more proud of our staff than, than what I am for what they've been doing throughout this whole tough year. Mental health emergency holds continue to increase. One of the things that we've been able to do up to this point was make sure that those mental health holds were for the twenty-four-hour max to that point. There is statute that says that they can stay with us until they have their hearing, which can be anywhere from five to seven days. Past that initial twenty-four-hour period, up until recently, we haven't had to do that. But there's been some troubles with COVID down at the Human Services Center. And there's been one or two times where we've had to. I hope that's not a trend that continues. I don't believe that putting a, a youth that's suffering with mental health problems in a jail cell is the appropriate procedure that should be followed. But we do what we can to keep them safe and, and do what we can to, to keep them moving along to somewhere that's going to be a, a more appropriate facility for them. Violence, we continue to see violence in our community. Today, we have twenty-four youth in our population. And out of that twenty-four youth, ten are either direct filed into adult court or being transferred to adult court for crimes such as murder, manslaughter, first-degree burglary, you know, and those types of situations. So that's something that hopefully we can try to reduce as a community. I know our law enforcement's working very hard to reduce that. And it's just something currently that we're struggling with, and it's a challenge for us. I put on here questioning of reforms. You know, it's a struggle because people struggle with change. But I think overall, we're doing very well with the reforms that are out there. We're always looking for improvements. And, and I think everyone from the county level up to the state level is continuing to work on that and trying to help people understand what's going on. Kids don't just get a free ride. If they get arrested, they'll, they're not always held, which people expect sometimes. But they're still going to continue to go through the court process. And if they're found guilty, they're going to be given consequences. And we just want people to understand that, that, that there are no free rides in the, in the court system for youth. It's, it's hard to understand sometimes because change is hard. And then the last challenge that I listed is qualifying for the Juvenile Detention Cost Sharing Fund. I, I don't believe we're going to qualify for that this year. Over the past couple of years, we've qualified, well, for the last three or four years, we've qualified. And what that's, that's a state program that looks at your average use of beds in the facility for the county. They average those. And then if you're over your average, then they try to reimburse you prorated throughout the state. Last year, I believe we were somewhere over twenty thousand. The year before, it was somewhere over forty-two thousand dollars that we received. This year, we actually utilized about eleven hundred fewer beds than our average. So we probably will not qualify for any funding in that. Finally, some projects that we're working on. I had listed the JDC Facility Subcommittee, and that, that goes to the facility programs that are going on after you had the task force. We're going to continue to participate in that and, and help in any way we can and seek what's most appropriate for JDC. I talked about re-stimulating JDI a little bit. We had a March meeting that was set up to get work groups going. Again, some of the things we're looking at are warrants and how we can process those without holding kids overnight unnecessarily. That got pushed off because it was scheduled, like I said, in March, right when COVID hit. I know that there's work to get that started right now and, and going again. And we're excited to be a part of that. I talked a little bit about the MRT program that we're going to have our staff take over. They're going to take over starting the fifteenth of this month. It's going to save us approximately fifty dollars a week, a little more, which doesn't sound like big dollars. But any dollar that I can find to save and be able to have our staff be empowered by having the ability to conduct that class and providing a service for the youth that they can move, if they don't finish here, they can move into the same program out in the community and have that continuation. I'm, I'm proud of being able to do it. And we're continually working to reduce confinement. Confinement is usually for acts of violence in our facility. They can be confined up to twenty-four to seventy-two hours if they act out aggressively. We're working to reduce that by being able to talk through the problems instead of having to possibly go hands-on where people can get hurt. We're doing that with our new staff trainer. He's going to be trained in motivational interviewing so that he can train the rest of our staff. We're also working with Children's Home Society on ACEs training. And what that stands for is adverse child effect. And it, it's a fancy term for trauma. And we're working to be a trauma-informed center. So they'll be training our staff as well as working with kids several times throughout the year. And it's a, it's an exciting new project that we've been able to put together with them relatively recently. And then we, we intend to implement all the recommendations that we get through the JDAI self-assessment once we get that report and start prioritizing those projects. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd, I'd like to be able to try and answer them.
Questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Ebber.
Just a couple of comments. Thank you, Jamie, for your report. I think you did a really thorough job. Like I said, just a couple of comments. You've mentioned in your concerns, questioning, people questioning some of the reforms and stuff. And I think that you did a good job of explaining that. We were trying to separate high-level kids from those low-level kids. You don't really want your kid who's truant and been charged or a runaway and been charged to be housed with somebody who's committed murder or, or, or some of those other higher-level offenses you had. And so that's really been the focus of, of some of the changes that we've made over the last ten years is figure out how to separate those kids. And if we can keep, safely keep low-level kids in the community, but yet hold them accountable for their actions, that's really the direction we've been going. The other thing that you mentioned was that cost-sharing fund, juvenile detention cost-sharing fund with the state, you know, and it's, I, I understand the purpose of it, but it's unfortunate that as we're trying to do what's right for kids, you're almost penalized because as we decrease the number of bed days we have, we no longer get funding from the state. It's more like a negative incentive. We don't, we don't want the wrong kids in our detention center. We want to make sure we're doing the right thing by our kids. But keeping kids out of detention, you're hopefully keeping them out of adult prison in the future. And so it is, it is disappointing that our, we're losing revenue in that direction, but it's also the right thing for our kids.
Commissioner Bender.
Can I respond real quick to one of her points that she made?
You bet.
In today's Argus Leader, there's a story about a bill going through that has to deal with child in need of supervision cases and, and limiting the amount of time that child in need of supervision cases can be held in secure detention to seven days. That's one example of, of really looking at the type of kid that is being held at the right place at the right time. It doesn't mean that they can't be held in custody. It just means that they're limiting the amount of time that you're putting them in a secured detention facility. Shelter care is still an option for those youth. And, and that's another example of kids might be held in custody. They just not, might not be held in secure detention.
Thank you, Jamie. Commissioner Bender.
My follow-up question went along with Commissioner Hybarger's question. I had, I had wondered why we had utilized eleven hundred fewer beds this year and whether that was related to COVID, or if you have data that shows that it was related to juvenile justice reform or something else. Can you comment on that?
I would say it had to do with COVID. You know, when I talked about some of our failures in, in following JDAI, is we were seeing some cases where probation violators or some low-level cases were finding their way into secure detention. And so I think COVID did have a lot to do with it. We also worked with law enforcement to make sure that we don't want to be holding kids unnecessarily if, especially during this time. And I think they did an amazing job of, of making sure that we really need to hold this kid before they call this for an intake call.
Thank you.
Commissioner Benega.
I would just remind commissioners, I think when Cindy and I first started this assignment, I guess, is that there was a discussion about building a hundred-bed facility. That facility size now with the programs that have been put in place for alternatives probably has been cut in half. And I think that's, shows a little bit about the improvement that alternatives have provided to the community.
I'll dovetail on that just a teeny bit. And that, that hundred-bed unit was when Gerald and I took office here, that was what was planned to build by this commission, or not this commission, but the prior commission, and the direction that JDC was going. They were planning on a brand-new hundred-bed unit and closing out. And we put the stops on that when we started the reform process. And, and I think we've done right by our kids and our community.
All righty. Jamie, thank you, and your staff. You have a very difficult job taking care of the kids. And I'm sure it's not as rewarding as it should be. So I just want you to know you have our appreciation. And thank you.
I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that. It can be very rewarding. And an example of that was yesterday, we had a young man graduate from high school, and we're able to have a small celebration for him with all the youth and stress the importance of education. And, and the youth did a great job of explaining that to his peers as well. So I want to thank you for all your support that you've given us. And, and, and thank you again for everything you do. And have a great day.
You too, sir. Thank you. All righty. We're going to go from Jamie Gravitt to Jamie Phelps. And we're going to look for a reappointment of Catherine Richardson to the Minnehaw County Veteran Service Officer for a term of four years. Jamie, Catherine, welcome.
Good morning. Jamie Phelps with Minnehaw County Human Services. This is Kathy Richardson, County Vet Service Officer for Minnehaw County. So we're recommending that you reappoint Kathy as the Vet Service Officer for Minnehaw County. And she's done, she's been with us now for a couple of years. She's done an excellent job. And again, this would be for a period of four years. And thereafter, going forward, every four years, there would be a reappointment as well.
Okay. If I may, Catherine, would you reintroduce yourself to the commission and tell us your background? And speak into the mic if you don't mind, please.
Good morning. I'm Kathy Richardson, the Minnehaw County Veteran Service Officer. And I've been with the county since April of 2019. And before that, I was a Veteran Service Officer with the state over at the VA. And I have truly enjoyed my time here. And, you know, being reappointed would be great.
And you are a veteran, I imagine.
I am, yep. I was, I served in the Marine Corps for thirteen years.
Thank you for your service.
You.
Commission, we need a motion to appoint Catherine for a four-year term.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Hybarger?
Aye.
Fard?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Congratulations. And thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to comment that the VA Hospital is giving vaccinations.
Oh, yes, I have heard that, too. Thank you, Commissioner. All righty. Moving on to authorize the chair to sign the 2021 Joint Security Protection Agreement between Minnehaw County and the State of South Dakota Department of the Military. Mr. Wina.
Good morning, commissioners. Keith, I'm with the Sheriff's Office. Just want to point out on the memo that you received, there's some discrepancies on the dates that were listed. But all the dollar amounts are correct on there. This agreement before us is for the fiscal year of the government, which starts in October of 2020 throughout the, this September of 21. So the agreement amount is nine hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred dollars. That's the initial money amount that we typically get just to kickstart the agreement. And then I'll be working with the air guard personnel to get the, the rest of the money, the funded request of two hundred and sixty thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So, but to kickstart that process, we need to have a agreement in, in place for the nine thirty-one K. So my request is just to have you guys sign that and get that ball going.
Commission, make a motion to approve. Second. Motion and a second. And we can do this with a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks. Good day.
Legislative update. Carol.
Good morning, commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. And it's legislative session, so you're getting a legislative update today. A few notes that I'll have. Jamie Gravitt mentioned Senate Bill 14, which talks about holding kids. And that one sailed through the Senate. It actually came out of the Senate Committee unanimous, so it was able to be put on the consent agenda. Sailed through that, the House. It passed out with a vote of twelve to one. And it is now in, going to the helpful House floor. A few bills that I just want to point out, the status as to where they're at. House Bill 1050 increases the cost of publishing official records and notices. That is awaiting a fiscal note on the House side of things. House Bill 1120 directs the Bureau of Administration to establish a website for the posting of notices. And that is being heard Thursday in the House Local Government. The one thing I noted with that is that it would be a searchable database, which I think would be, which would be great. The one thing I noted with that is that it would be a searchable database, which I think would be, which would be great in order to find things, because we can sometimes even struggle in our own systems that way. House Bill 11117 is a change recognizing teleconferencing. And currently, if you're gonna do teleconferencing, you have to provide a place for the public to come to. And that would take that out of there. House Bill 1058 was recalling of county commissioners. That one died in committee. Uh, Senate Bill 152 would authorize counties to issue off-sale liquor licenses. And that's been sent to the local government, but no date has been set for that yet. House Bill 142, current statute states the Board of County Commissioners shall meet at the courthouse or the usual place, place of holding court. And, you know, Pennington County is the same as we are, where it's an attached building. And this would take out that definition and state that they can meet at other places along with a noticing on that one. And that is assigned to local government, no date on that one. Senate Bill 164 just dropped on Friday, so we have not had a chance to, to hear much about that one. But 164 addresses criminal forfeiture. And it wants to make crimes less profitable for people. And, uh, there's two things in there. One is that the researching and noticing of anyone who would have an interest in the property subject to forfeiture would be the responsibility of the prosecuting authority, which in the county would end up being the state's attorneys. And then if the defendant in the criminal prosecution is represented by a public defender or other court-appointed counsel, the appointed counsel shall represent that defendant in the forfeiture proceeding and any other related proceedings. So I guess if they take your boat, we are now defending them. A few bills that I'll just mention that are related to equalization. One, 1085 refines the criteria for classifying land as agricultural for tax purposes. And, uh, that one is set for this morning in-house taxation and has a possible amend, amendment that may be coming forward. 1099 would increase from $10,000 to $100,000 the agricultural exemption buildings and adjust this value each year by the CPI. And that one is scheduled, um, for February 2nd today in-house taxation also. Senate Bill 70 is a cleanup bill passed through the committee and Senate uncontested. And Senate Bill 113 would add horse husbandry, husb, husbandry, I didn't know I was gonna struggle over that word, uh, to agricultural property for tax purposes. And that is unknown yet. When that will be heard, it's being sent to Senate taxation. Any questions I can answer for you? Well, thank you very much.
Horse wifeery comes to mind, but we'll stick to husbandry for now, so. Alrighty. Thank you, Carol. At that point, where we have liaison reports. Commission liaison reports. Commissioner Hager.
I have a couple. Since I was gone, I thought I better make a list. First one I was gonna, I had a phone call while I was actually gone about the Planning and Zoning Board that someone had attended, the Zoom meeting, and just some suggestions. Now, I haven't attended a Planning and Zoning Zoom meeting, so I don't really know what they're like, but the, the concern was that, um, the person that was coming to the board didn't realize what board members were even on there until they voted. And, um, was, did, thought it was this board because they couldn't see everyone's faces, I guess. I, I don't know. I haven't been there. But just a comment that, um, maybe people could identify themselves and, and I brought this comment before that the Planning Board, it would be nice if they would make a, a comment on whether they were, if they were gonna vote against or for something. And the reason why, um, this particular vote, I think only one person voted against it and, and the petitioner was like, I don't even know why they voted against it. I didn't know they were voting until the vote came out. And that, that person was gonna call and just ask the, the board member, you know, what was the reasoning, just because he was concerned. Um, I had brought it up once before because if it gets appealed and brought to us and we don't know why Planning members voted against it, we're kind of starting in the weeds and trying to figure it all out again. So I think it'd be helpful if they, at least if they're going to vote against something or be in the minority, that they give a comment, so we kind of know where they're coming from. So, and also that people don't always know who's on the call, which was concerning. Couple things on the library. As of February 1st, the book quarantine was changed from seven days to three days, so that'll put more books back into circulation. They have added, I think you knew that they added overdrive to the library service, but this week they also added digital magazines and they have over 3,000 titles of magazines in 19 different languages. And they're upgrading their, um, internet connections in Baltic, Colton and Hartford. Um, it was, if more than one person would get on the computer, it would slow down so much they couldn't even get their work done at those offices. So, um, that's a big plus for them. Then on to Human Services. Human Services has been working with IT on an online application for financial assistance. They've also been working on putting it into a Spanish version. And that will be, um, soon available online on the HS website. So people, um, Spanish-speaking people would be able to fill out their application online. Um, we did add one new Alliance staff. That is a half-county, half-grant-funded person, and they started in the last month. Going really well, seems, um, familiar with the situ, uh, familiar with what we're trying to accomplish there and seems like a really good fit. Also, you're aware of the past hospital liabilities that the county was holding. We're nearly, we have nearly resolved all of those up to August 2019. Um, we only have just a couple of cases with one of the hospitals that are very near completion. So that was a big success. 4H has, um, I talked with Charles and they have 28 classrooms and nine virtual classrooms set up to do CHICS again this spring. And they'll be running that program March 1st through mid-May. Um, their staff has already, has begun participating, or has begun working, working towards participating in our Fall Sioux Empire Fair again. At this point, they're quite confident that, uh, 4H will be back at the fairgrounds, which is a big plus and draw for our fair people. And then also Char, Charles or Chuck was selected to be the Urban Coordinator for South Dakota for the National Urban Extension Leaders and will be showcasing what we're doing in Minnehaha County across the United States. I'm assuming virtually, not traveling, but, so that's my report. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. I didn't know you were quarantining books. Good to know. Any other liaison reports? I had a couple. Um, last Tuesday, Carol and I were at the Detox Advisory Board Meeting. And, um, it was an interesting meeting, especially with the change to having detox in our, um, Public Safety Building and moving it over to, um, Carol. Right? Yeah, okay. Got all these different places. Carol Institute, yeah, not Carol Muller. And, you know, some of the staff moving and that type of thing. Were able to tour the facility and to, um, get a good idea of, there, there's so much in motion right now. It's a very temporary thing. Um, they're doing their best and, and their fa, best, in fact, I think is an outstanding job of taking care of people and working through the situation. So we can move everything to the link, which was my other, uh, meeting last week. We had a Link Board Meeting. We, I don't even know what I can say or can't say even on that one because there's been so much going on and things happening behind the, um, scenes, but I'd encourage you to take a look at the, um, the, the report. It's done in an outstanding matter, manner. So two things that kind of go hand in glove between detox and the link and, um, looking forward to getting the link fully opened up and operational here hopefully in, in May or by the 1st of June. That's all I've got. Any others? New business? Commissioner Barth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, honestly, I'd like to respond to some of the stuff from today's meeting. And Cindy, I appreciate you bringing up that issue of Zoom because I think we are still battling to find the right way to run things. And, uh, you know, the Planning and Zoning Zoom, I can't, if I'm at home, I cannot see who's here either. In fact, I can't see who's here if I'm zooming. You know, I don't know that, uh, we have the state's attorney present. I don't know that Dave Baumeister is present. I do get to hear, you know, uh, the roll call on votes and that's helpful, but we need to do a better job on Zoom and hopefully as our technologies advance, we'll be able to. And along the lines of Planning and Zoning, I know, uh, we are looking into the, uh, potential for Governor's Office of Economic Development interacting with us on some of our agricultural development. And, uh, that's an important thi, a very important thing. And with the presentation we had today from the Sioux Falls, uh, Foundation there, I don't want people in the rural area to think we don't care about their development. I'd love to see the Hartford-Brower subdivision be made into the, uh, pearl that it should be. You know, a $10 million investment like the city of Sioux Falls got from the governor would certainly help some of these smaller towns, uh, Dell Rapids, Brandon, Hartford, get the development that they need. So I wanted to go to criminal justice for a moment. Cindy was pointing out that with the changes in law, that, uh, we are doing such a good job, we're no longer getting that state money. And the same thing happened with the criminal justice reform of a few years back where we had already, as Minnehaha County, put some of those reforms into effect. And so we got nothing from the state, whereas Pennington County suddenly got hundreds of thousands of dollars from the state. And the state made no apology for that. They just thought they were doing a great job, but in fact, doing the right thing cost us in that case, and it's costing us in this case. And, you know, I don't know, Cindy, if anybody remembers back in the day when we had more Minnehaha kids incarcerated than, uh, than Portland, Oregon, uh, did. You know, are, are our kids so much worse than those kids in Oregon? I don't think so. But, and lastly, I would say on that horse stuff, we, uh, it used to be if you had 20 acres, uh, 20.002 acres, you could be adjudicated as agricultural. We changed it to 40. But, so what would happen is you'd have, you know, 20, 21 acres with a palatial entrance, tree-lined entrance. And you'd have a Shetland pony running around with your dog and you'd call it a farm. And, uh, every time this legislature looks at reforming our property tax laws, they get worse. That's just my comment. Thank you.
Good to see you back. Thank you, Commissioner.
One more thing.
Yes, sir.
I was noticing also that people were not speaking into the microphone and it's a pet peeve when you're at home and cannot hear. And, uh, thank you, Carol, for going up there and pointing it out. I almost made a point of order on it. But use the microphone. People at home can't hear you.
And you can, point of order anytime, Commissioner. To your comments about the, um, economic development, um, there is a meeting on Thursday, February 25th. All of you are invited to, um, annual meeting. And there is gonna be some big announcements and there is gonna be some, I think, significant changes with the organization. So, um, exciting stuff, good stuff. So, and it's gonna, I think, truly benefit the areas that you're talking about, whether it be Baltic or, um, Hartford or Crooks. And we can even venture down into places like Harrisburg and T and Lennox, but, um, the world doesn't end at 57th Street. So appreciate it. Any other comments? No exec today? Okay, so I'll look for, um, any old business?
I was just gonna say it's been a very long time since all the Commissioners have sat at the table together. So that's really old business, so it's nice to see everybody back.
And a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.